... January 8, 2015, an order. Motion to accept the minutes are the agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is the Scenic Road hearing for 71 Clapp Road. Greg, why don't you tell us what you want to do?
For the record, my name is Greg Morris, registered engineer, representing Larry Leslie Stenbeck. They've applied for a scenic road hearing for their project at 71 Clapp Road. The planning board endorsed this form A plan probably around a month ago, month and a half ago. And what we're looking for is, we're looking to gain access now onto the newly created Lot 1. Lot 1 has a stone wall across its entire frontage. It fronts on Clapp Road, which is a designated scenic road. We're looking at removing approximately 20 or 20 linear feet of that wall. We would relocate it coming along the driveway as you pull in. We create returns on the ends of the wall coming into there. We've located the trees within the right of way throughout the frontage of the property. There are a couple larger trees. There's a 36-inch pine right in the front. But you'll see, we've located the driveway to avoid all of the larger trees. Anything that we'd be taking down would be just brush or saplings under three inches in that location. We're proposing to leave all of the other trees within the right of way as you see them on the plan.
Well?
There's a couple of interesting things here. One of them is there's a catch basin. You'll see it right to the, actually to the east of, no. Right to the west of the driveway opening. And the DPW reviewed the plan. They'd like to have that catch basin included in the pavement. The reason is that they're afraid that if it's not, that stormwater is going to go across Clapp Road and form like ice on Clapp Road. So that's what they'd like to do with that. There also is an opening of about maybe 20 or 30 feet just to the west of the driveway, east of the driveway, the east of the driveway. And I thought that perhaps it might be a nice reuse of the stone to just fill in that part of the wall instead of, you know, doing something, you know, sort of, you know, additional on the driveway, you know, but we're right on the street. Everyone could see it driving by.
Where's that opening? Is it shown on the plan?
It's to, no, it's not shown on the plan. But it is there. It's about maybe 30 feet. It's to the...
Sort of near the utility pole?
Sorry, it's...
Sort of near the utility pole.
Yeah, sort of near the utility pole. Between the utility pole and the driveway, it's about where it is. But you can't really move the driveway up there because you've got, you've got that septic system right there. You'd have to take too sharp of the turn with the, yeah, the reserve area.
We can find relocating stones to that location.
Okay.
Is it drainage?
The drainage, I mean, we showed the edge of the driveway, right at the edge of the catch basin, so it's moving the driveway up foot to incorporate the catch basin. We're okay with that.
That's that CBN, right?
Yeah.
Motion, board?
Is there any kind of a burn plan, Greg, near the end of the driveway, sort of? I guess there wouldn't need to be. It's a direct shot out. You're not going to get any blowback from the road drainage into the driveway. So just incorporating that catch basin in a piece of pavement or even a little sort of outshoot would do what everybody's talking about doing? Okay.
Lightest side problems?
Not at this location. It's on a fairly straight section of the road moving left or right. I haven't shot it, but it's a straight section of the road here.
Any other questions, board?
I mean, it says the pine there that's right by the catch basin, the 36-inch, is that?
To stay.
Okay, yeah. And that, but you're actually, if I understand what you said, you were going to move the opening about a foot to catch the catch basin?
Yeah.
So that's not going to interfere with that tree at all, is it?
No, it shouldn't.
Okay.
All right, two minutes, driveway?
You the motion maker?
Yep.
Any other questions before a motion?
Nope.
Okay. I move to close the Scenic Road Act public hearing and that the planning board vote to approve the removal of approximately 20 linear feet of stone wall and saplings under three inch in diameter for construction of a new driveway and a 20-foot wide wall opening for 71 Clapp Road, Lot 1, as shown on a plan provided by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated dated December 4, 2014, entitled Proposed Curb Cut Sketch, 77 Clapp Road, Lot 1, with revisions through January 5, 2015. Temporary disturbance of 10 feet of stone wall is proposed for utility installation with the wall being restored to its original condition after utility installation. Stone from the wall opening will be reused onsite to fill in the existing opening in the wall. The driveway at the street line will be widened to include the existing catch basin in Clapp Road.
Widen or relocated?
Say relocated. Stones are relocated.
No, no, the, is the driveway shifting or is it just, is it increasing?
It's not going to increase, it'll just shift. Relocated to the west.
Okay. The driveway at the street line will be shifted the necessary distance to include the existing catch basin in Clapp Road. The applicant will notify the town planner 48 hours before construction commences, 48 hours prior to temporary disturbance of the stone wall for utilities, and when the driveway and utility installation is fully completed. This approval is contingent upon all federal, state, and local permits being obtained. And did we, oh, you did say the existing stone is used for the, okay.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Greg. Next item on the agenda is the release, first surety release. Request for surety release. Who owns Blanchard Farm?
Who owns Blanchard Farm?
Mr. Blanchard?
We don't trust.
I gather you had a chance to look at the numbers provided?
Yeah, we're fine with them.
Yeah, everything's fine. Pat went out and did a complete review of everything, and I believe I was out there, I actually went out there with him.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I think we're all on the same page. You might get out of here by nine, huh?
Motion?
Motion.
Clapp Road and Blanchard Farm, so that's the ones that I take you down?
Yeah. No, I'm sure.
I move to accept Blanchard Farm Limited Liability Corporation's request to reduce the amount of surety being held by the planning board for completion of the Blanchard Farm Estates subdivision from $99,732.38 to $67,380.80 remaining in the account as much of the loaming and seeding has been done, binder for the walk is installed, some street trees are planted, partial as-bilts have been done, the utility pole has been removed, and pavement patched, and the reduction is consistent with the engineer's recommendations.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Request for surety release still in the states. Have they agreed to the numbers?
Yes.
Wasn't it just, yeah, it's a small amount?
Very, very little left.
Yeah, in case they needed to reseed, right?
Yeah.
Hold on to, what, 1,500, I think you said?
1,750.
1,750, okay.
He was just concerned that he didn't want to have to pay another filing fee to have another surety reduction.
Well...
What's the filing fee?
$50.
No, it's more than that. It's several hundred dollars.
Oh, really?
Well, in that case...
We can waive that at the end. I mean, I think the important thing is hanging on to the money to make sure that everything's covered.
Do you want to wait and see if he's coming?
I mean, it's up to you if you want to, but we haven't heard anything from him.
Well, let's hang on for a minute. Let's do, you've got a 40R update?
The application is coming together. There are multiple pieces to it. There's some maps that we're having MAPC do some work on. There are, there's a new draft, which I'll hand out. There's kind of financial analysis, for lack of a better word, into the different parcels that are going into the 40R and how they're assessed. For instance, the ones where the land is assessed higher compared to the building are ones that would be most likely to redevelop. The ones where the rent per square foot is low are most likely to be redeveloped. The biggest property in there is situate concrete pipe as far as the redeveloping ones, and because it's industrial, the rent per square foot is quite low. It's, you know, $6 per square foot compared with 20 to 30 in, you know, the rest of the, you know, the rest of the properties. So that seems like a real good bet to develop, to redevelop. I'm going to be going out there probably either tomorrow or Monday and taking pictures of things like the units for lease sign at the Driftway Medical Building and anything else like that that I can find that indicates that people are really trying to either sell their properties or that there are vacancies or, you know, anything like that. So if any of you have any ideas on places within the district that should, you know, that are for sale and maybe the sign just went up or anything like that, I'd, you know, love to hear about it.
What was the final, well, I know you've got, you said a revised map. I know we were going back and forth on the exact outline of the district.
Well, you guys voted.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a couple meetings ago.
How soon did I forget?
Yeah, so it goes out to the Rotary and then over to the intersection of the new Driftway, Driftway.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to verify that.
Yep. So that's all coming together, and I think the important thing is to make sure that people who own properties know about it, that they support it, or, you know, find out if they don't support it. And so the next big meeting on this is going to be January 22. And I know I've told some of you already, but the contact from the state, whose name is Bill Rail, and he's been there for a number of years, he's going to be at the meeting, as will Matt, the planner from MAPC. So both of them will be there. I believe also, I sent around an invitation to town officials today. I heard that there were some selectmen who were interested in coming as well, who, you know, have some, you know, thoughts about the area.
We've got a selectman who braved the cold weather to come to our meeting, and we appreciate it.
So, yeah, and of course, you know, our liaison is, you know, hopefully going to come, maybe?
Oh, I'd definitely be there.
Oh, that would be terrific. So, so that's...
Did you include the map in the memo that you sent to us, the new district that you voted on?
Yes.
Okay, so I haven't seen that. Okay.
So that's where we are. So I think this meeting will be sort of a, you know, an important kind of crossroads to see where things fall out, you know? Does it, does it still seem like a good idea after you've heard from everybody, you've heard from, you know, whatever town officials show up, you've heard from the state people or not, so?
We should be able to figure out what the policy is.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You mentioned having illustrations of space for rent or properties for sale or that kind of thing. I mean, is the pitch that this, the enactment of this district, overlay district, is going to help the sort of viability of the area and increase activity, increase interest, increase saleability of the area?
Yeah, very much. Yeah, that's kind of, you know, one main purpose of it.
And is that kind of established in terms of the history of other towns with this, with this kind of a, an overlay?
I think it's, it's not 100% successful. I mean, there are some places like Plymouth, Cordage Park, I think has not, you know, really developed the way they thought it would, and that was a 40R district. So it really depends on the location. I mean, that's, you know, probably not good to talk about one that didn't work, but I'm sure there are some that have worked quite well and...
But generally...
Find out where they are.
Generally, the sort of, what, feeling, common knowledge, whatever, is that if my property is placed in this district and it becomes more valuable or more saleable or more rentable or whatever potentially?
Well, yeah, that would be one of the main purposes of it, and one of the reasons is that even though you have the village business overlay district that requires the special permit, so it's a harder threshold for an applicant to get over.
Right.
Whereas this is more, it's easier. It's the three votes instead of the four votes. The design guidelines are somewhat discretionary. They're not as cast in stone as with the special permit. So that's another thing that, you know, to take into consideration.
Right.
On the other hand, then, there are the incentive payments too, so...
But that benefits the town, not the property owner or the developer?
Not directly, except maybe, you know, for the tax base, you know, it's a good thing.
No, I mean, don't get me wrong. I hope that's the case we're able to make.
Yeah, I mean, maybe everyone's taxes are a little bit better because of that incentive payment.
Well, not just that part, but a benefit to the property owners and the businesses and potential businesses there within the new district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think taking it down from majority vote from a special permit makes a big difference.
At our last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, where we invited all the Greenbush owners that had it at stake. So is that also on January 22, you're inviting all of the owners, potentially?
The owners within the new district.
Yes, yes.
So it won't be the people from Greenbush, it'll be the people out on Driftway.
Right.
New Driftway.
Right.
Yeah, and I've also spoken with a couple of the attorneys. Mike Loring represents some of the property owners there. Bill Orinberger represents some other property owners and has his own property there. So that may help, you know, just get people out.
Good, good.
Well, I'm sorry.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it appropriate to ask for like a comparison between the overlay and the 40R since the overlay was just voted on at the last annual town meeting? And this is so quick. Can we sort of just get a side-by-side, understand whether the impact of this?
Yeah, we need to...
Yeah, I could certainly put something down and have it, you know, for the meeting, but I mean, I think one of the main differences is the vote, that the vote is easier for them to get, is, you know, one less vote that they need. Another one is that there is more affordable housing that would be required, so it goes from 15% to 20% with a 40R and...
Density is increased.
The density's slightly increased. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too. I mean, a side-by-side comparison.
Yep, yep, okay.
Is that something maybe MAPC could help out with, or is that kind of in their purvey or their...
They probably could, but, you know, I've...
I know that they...
...got easier access to the bylaw and, yeah, I...
Not that difficult.
As long as I'm not doing it, I think it's straightforward.
That's what I was saying, yeah. No problem.
No problem.
Okay.
County?
Yes, we have a town that you might want to hold on to one until after you vote.
Hold on.
There's purchase orders in here for the refunds from the surety, but we haven't voted for Tilden Estates yet.
What time is Tilden?
Eight o'clock. I can see if he's out of the hall.
Do you want to do the minutes?
All right, the minutes.
Yeah, minutes, yeah.
We still have to wait till 8:30 to open the hearing for 50 Country Way.
Right. Get rid of the things that we need to do afterwards.
Oh, no, no question about that. I get it.
I move that we approve the situate planning board minutes for December 11, 2014, and the situate planning board minutes for December 18, 2014.
Second.
Send it, we're sending out his email. Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
He's not out there yet, but he did, he did say he was coming.
Talk about, oh... Oh, I was going to say, kind of on the same line of, you were talking about the lease sign at the medical building. I noticed that even though it's outside of our potential 40R district, but at the Riverway condominiums, they had that sign for retail to be purchased, and then now that sign is gone, like, again, what, do you know anything that's going on there or what's happening or any update?
I haven't heard anything about what's going on with that building. We did contact the bank that's holding the performance bond, and we're working up an estimate for all the little things that they haven't done, so we can, you know, go to the bank and say, you know, we want, you know, X number of dollars to cover that. But as far as the building in the front, no. You know, when we tried to contact, well, we contacted the owner, we invited him to a meeting and he didn't show up, so...
Well, like I said, we all noticed that there was the, they were trying to sell off that parcel for the retail portion of it and the affordable portion, and then, so that was, those signs were up for quite a while, then they were gone, and I'm thinking, well, did someone bite or did they just, you know?
Yeah, I can reach out to him again and see if I can at least find that out, so...
Is there an explanation for why he didn't?
No, there never was.
Never was?
So, not very pleasant. I was going to mention that, that we're doing something new with the 40B that's coming in. We don't have it yet. We don't know exactly when it's going to come in, but the 200 lots off of Booth Hill and Clapp Roads, it has a name, it's going to be called Bartlett Fields. And Tricia had an idea that it would be good to vet the land swap and actually the whole project through the planning board and the Conservation Commission before they applied for the CBA, for the comprehensive permit. So that's also going to go on, on January 22, because, you know, it's a time when they can do it and...
Is that my time or is that eating into the hour and a half that we've got?
No, that's not eating into the hour and a half. That's after the hour and a half. The hour and a half for the 40R, is that the hour and a half you're talking about? Yeah, it's after that.
That'll be interesting.
And vetted in terms of, as if it were?
Well, it's not an application, but it'll be more like an informational meeting for them to present what the development's going to look like, what does the town get in exchange for the land with the land swap? Are there any ideas that you have or that residents have about making the development better before they actually submit it? I think, you know, that's the kind of meeting.
That's good.
I have a question. Well, the 22nd. If it's a 90-minute presentation on 40R and a 90-minute presentation on Livingstone's property, is there any possibility of having our meeting start earlier?
Well, we already invited everybody for the 40R at 7:30.
Okay.
And the 40R is, it's an hour and a half because there's a presentation part for an hour and discussion and so on. Then there's a public hearing for a half hour, and then after that comes, I was envisioning it being an hour and no longer than an hour for the comprehensive permit, you know?
Are those the only two things on the agenda?
Those are really the only two things on the agenda. So hopefully not too bad.
I have a little, sort of not quite a liaison report, but it's along the lines of what you were talking about on the Driftway, not having the development of the affordable housing going forward. The affordable housing unit that was connected with the river, is it, no, it's not the Riverway. What's the one?
Villages at South River?
Village at South River, thank you, is actually underway. There's a foundation port, there's a modular, it's going to be a modular home on order, and the building permit was applied for today.
And where is that?
It's going to be off of Stockbridge Road. I'm not exactly sure where off of Stockbridge Road.
Is one of the two pieces of, for one?
Is it? Because we had two lots that we looked at off Stockbridge. Is that one of those?
You approved it, I think it was several years ago. I think it's like 163 to 167, Stockbridge, it backs up to the landfill.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's great.
It's happening.
Speaking of Stockbridge, any update on the, I can't remember what the property name was, but it was the 40B development that was quite at the apartments, was it Stockbridge Woods or something?
Oh, Stockbridge Landing.
That's coming before zoning board next week. And in its fairly final form, as I understand, everybody's kind of agreed on all of the nuts and bolts and design parameters and this, that, and the other things, so it's pretty far down the line.
Has it, to your knowledge, has it changed significantly since when the design review committee looked at it? I know that was probably a year or maybe a year and a half ago, or maybe two years.
Yeah, I think it's...
I can't even tell you because I don't remember what the design committee, review committee looked at.
It's been a while.
It was...
I know the drainage and, you know, detention basins and grading and a lot of the engineering has changed.
Was it, it was like three buildings, if I remember right, but they were broken up?
Several buildings, I know that much.
Three, four, five unit buildings?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I think it changed a lot.
It's changed a couple of times. They went from condos to apartments back.
Seventy-three units, I believe, all rental, in two and three-story buildings. And I think there are more than three buildings. If I remember seeing the plan, there might be...
Six.
Six, eight, something like that, right. But it, you know, it doesn't in planning, plan view, and I haven't seen elevations or anything else on it, but it doesn't look like a bad situation. It looks fairly, fairly well laid out at this point, and it's far enough from the street and screened well enough from the street, so you really won't know it's there driving along Stockbridge Road. In fact, there would be no place really in town that you can really get the impact of it.
Unless you're on the train.
Well, that's true, if you're on the train.
And will they be tied into sewer?
Uh, no, it's onsite.
It's an interesting thing because it didn't work as the seven-house subdivision. It's a magic, it's a wonderful magic when you put 40B in front of it, how things work.
Speaking of that, any update on, again, the name escapes me, the one that I think connects to Otis Street down in the harbor that's the...
Stenbeck Place, yeah, Stenbeck Place.
Any, I mean, I drove through there a couple times, but it looked like they had a couple foundations still.
Yeah, they're still building. There's two more. I think those are triplexes that are being built along that. And then I think there are some farther up in the circle towards Tilden Road too, still to be built.
You remember where it comes around?
Yep.
I think there's two units going there.
Part of that was to sort of rebuild an old farmhouse on Tilden Road, right at the entrance to the new development. They've done kind of a nice job with that. If you're driving by, take a look at it.
Yeah, they did.
They only kept the front facade, maybe similar to what we're talking about at 50 Country Way, and kind of propped it up and then built a new home behind it, but it's very nicely done.
Leas, liaison reports, I'll get CPC, CPC is starting, on Monday, it's starting to hear the applications. There are 18, or 19, I think, applications, I'll send out a list.
Really?
We went from, my thought was gonna be very quiet CPC for the, for the meeting, and ended up that when the floodgates opened up, they came in.
Soon as they found out you had money.
Everybody.
Is it, how much of it is new versus, like, sort of maintenance of existing?
Maintenance, can't do maintenance, but some of, some of which we've seen before, on the historical side, there's a couple of things that we've talked about before, particularly as it relates to the old old bucket house, and Daniel Webster Shea. Some of those are new. We've got, an interesting one is beetry punishment, putting sand on the beach up by mine.
Excuse me?
Back up and begin that process, restore that beach.
As a CPC activity?
Well, that's the question, it's gonna have to be addressed, as to whether that is indeed recreational.
Recreational, yeah.
But it's.
Interesting.
Speaking of CPC that we've already voted on, what's the status of the, the Tilden, the walking trail? Wasn't that on Tilden?
Tilden, part one?
Yeah, part one.
Yeah, they're working, still working through engineering on that one. Right, it ends up that part of the issue is, and you're gonna, you're gonna see it on some of the other ones, where you've got the right-of-way, what's happened is, is that the roadway has shifted so that it sits on, right, right on the line, which where the roadway, the right-of-way is, where the road and the property are identical to that line. So at that point, you can't move any, you can't do anything on that side of it, because of the way that the narrowness of the road.
Yeah.
So that presents a problem. And then on the other side, you've got, to the point that they're far, farther away, so that you can put them there, but that's, runs into the issue individually where the telephone poles are, or the electric poles.
I thought part of the discussion was that the path would go on, even on people's property, I thought that was part of the, sort of the pitch.
No, it was. Not everybody's agreed to do that.
So it's kind of basically in limbo, really, right now?
So it's in limbo, it's not unlike what's happening with Country Way. Country Way's got, the issue with Country Way is basically telephone poles. Because you can come back up, and we can put, we can leave the pole in, in the bike path, right, but we can't do that and make a handicap accessible because of the forty-some inches that you need. So that's really where the problem is coming, so it's, it was compounded with the water pipe replacement program, but it's also compounded, is that that road comes back, it also shifts within its right-of-way, in near-sap property lines, but the primary issue is the forty, something about 50, 48, 52, somewhere near telephone poles.
Bill, when you're doing that kind of a project on a scenic road, I should know this, but is that subject to scenic road approval?
Yep.
So stone walls and trees getting in the way as well?
Yeah. But anyway, I'll, I'll circulate that out, so that you'll have a list of.
Is anyone else getting warm? Maybe because I'm drinking coffee. I'm just, no, I'm just asking. You're not?
It's quite warm.
Okay.
So we got accounting, we're gonna hold off for a minute. Tilden Estates finally here.
7:59, I was on a day of block.
Next item on the agenda is this request for sure to release for Tilden Estates. We've come back up.
Steve B. Orkman. Yeah, I think it's, might as well start with Laura, just let her do her thing. I think it's pretty well set to go. DPW is agreed, I think, and Pat Brennan's done his report, the as-built plans are all in, reviewed by the town. The only issue that we have left there is, we seeded, the last thing we did was seeded, hydroseeded between the street and the sidewalk. After we put the top coat on, we had to build the berms up, you know, build the loam up. So we seeded it, and it, the grass just hasn't come up yet, so he is recommending holding back 1,750 bucks, in case we have to go hydroseed it again in the springtime. I think the grass will probably come up anyways, but if we have to reseed that little strip, we'll reseed the strip, so we don't have a problem with, you know, with the board holding back 1,750. I do have two, hopefully real quick issues that I'd like to hopefully address with the board. I know there's a fee of like $350 or something every time you ask for a surety reduction. I'm hoping that the board wouldn't ask us to take $350 out, because we have to put that little bit of grass seed in there, and would just vote to release it when the grass is up, and I'm sure Laura could drive by and say the grass is up, we don't have to have Pat Brennan come back again. So hopefully, that's a pretty simple one. And we are gonna be on for a street acceptance for a public road, and I think we meet all the criteria, there's no veteranment cost to any of the butters to the roadway, or anything like that. And I went in and talked to Kevin, they are setting a meeting, I believe, they're gonna set the date for the meeting next week, for street acceptance, and the only thing I would ask the board is, since we're here now, instead of me coming back again, would the board possibly just take a vote to, you know, subject to the street acceptance committee, that the planning board has no issue with this becoming a public road, just so I don't have to come back in again? That's about it.
From my standpoint, I think you come back in for the street acceptance, the waiver of the 350 is something I don't have a problem with.
I'm in agreement with you, I think we should wait on the street acceptance, but.
Because it has to go through the committee first?
Yep. And we're gonna have to vote on it anyway, to accept the street layout.
Okay.
It's a really structured kind of process, where the, you know, the street acceptance committee depends on the planning board, and I think, I think there's, there's like a legal aspect to it, where the planning board has to vote on it.
And given the sensitivity of the last, the last meeting.
That's fine. Never up, never in, if you get asked.
Had something on about.
Do we have a motion?
Like, just waive the?
The fee for the, for the return of the final surety.
You have the option, you could wait until, until the grass comes up, and then go for it once.
Somehow, I think we prefer to take the money that we have left, which is reasonably significant.
Well, I would feel like I wasn't doing my job if I didn't make that suggestion. Got a motion?
Uh, yep. I move to accept Tilden Woods Limited Liability Corporation's request to reduce the amount of surety being held by the planning board for completion of the Tilden Estate subdivision from $102,338 to $1,500, sorry, $1,750 remaining in the account, as the work has been completed, except for possibly some reseeding in the spring, and the reduction is consistent with the engineer's recommendation. The board will also waive the fee for the return of the file, final surety.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we'll talk to Laura about getting on the agenda, again, in coordination with the street.
Yep.
And in general, I just wanted to say that I've driven through there quite a few times, and I think it's just a really nice development, and it's one of the things that I think, you know, we need to look to in the future for, like, it's a good example. Maybe not the, the basins, we all know that. But the sidewalks, the way the streets laid out, the houses, I mean, everything really came together very nicely, so I wanted to certainly congratulate you on a very nice development that enhances the character of Situate, I believe.
I would say one of the most important things to me, and Bill will stand up for me, this, I know, when we do developments like this, it always starts out with a lot of neighborhoods don't understand what's going on, and I think that we actually made friends with a lot of the neighbors around this subdivision, and I think that they are pretty happy with the end result on what happened, and that, that means a lot to me. So I appreciate the fact the board did it, I like working with the board on, on getting them through, but the final product is a nice product, so I'm glad it's a, it's an asset to the town of Situate. So I appreciate that.
Now, we can only figure out how to make a ball field out of somebody's detention basis.
That, believe it or not, that one is a ball field. The kids are in that basin on a daily basis, and there's at least 40 or 50 athletic balls down there all the time, constantly.
Well, I remember the original, like, way, way back, I know you talked about actually connecting it with, not Williams, what's the other, there was like a driveway.
It actually came back out to Elm Street again.
Yeah, exactly.
Through the Tilden property, which Paul Scott's nephew owned. That was before he had purchased it, and we were working with the woman who owned that as well, but it was too much road to construct. So, again, we, we required certain waivers from the board, and I think that they were reasonable waivers, and I think the board saw that, and it was just a good project overall. Like you say, the finished product in there is a really nice subdivision.
Yeah. Is everyone familiar with Facebook and Throwback Thursday? There's this thing on Facebook, you submit a picture, like, throwback, like, I remember when.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. So that was the development that we walked through, that Mr. Limbacher fell, do you remember that? Took a tumble.
Still haven't heard back from my lawyer on how.
I think he got rather wet when he took the tumble.
So that was my.
Before I had gray hair.
That was my Throwback Thursday statement.
I know, I know I could get at least 350.
Should we change his surety?
Can you wait until it's a public road, and we can just blame the town? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
I have that with the.
Oh, yes.
So, accounting?
Now we can do accounting.
All right. I move that we approve $213.06 for legal ads in the Situate Mariner for 253 Hatherley Road, and 380 Country Way. Also, $1,860 for engineering peer review for Fifty Country Way, the definitive plan. Also, $375 to Chesia Consulting for Fifty Country Way mixed-use special permit engineering peer review. Wow. Oh, this is the surety, I'm like, wow. $32,487 for the partial surety reduction for Blanchard Farm subdivision. So $67,380 will be, or I'm sorry, will remain in the account. $32,487, uh, sorry, $32,487 will be refunded to the applicant. And, that's a big one, too. For Tilden Woods, the one that we just discussed, for $101,085.14 for the reduction in surety for the Tilden Estate subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Like, when you look at those bills, and you're like, wow, that's a big bill.
Typewriter repair.
Yeah.
New BMW.
And for me, I believe that, that Tilden Estates was actually the first that I saw all the way through, from the very, the planning to completion, so it was a watershed moment.
Never made a play.
The board was really involved with how that came out, too, you know, it was really interactive, I think. Do you remember Dan asking for those trails, and I think you all wanted the road, you know, got the road laid out in a different configuration from the way they first laid it out?
And those signs are nice, that say, access to town property, I like those.
Yeah.
I kinda like this. Kind of a minor liaison report, the skating rink at Widows Walk is up, obviously gonna be working much better this weekend, as opposed to last weekend.
I thought it'd be pretty good today.
Yes, yes. There was a series of very interesting emails going back and forth about the used skating equipment. Yeah, yeah. So, I know my gang will probably be down there this weekend. Gonna put up no fishing signs? Yes.
I'm swimming.
Ice fishing?
Over the hill. Is there a long, near-term plan to put lights up to it down there? They're there? Yep. I hadn't seen them. The portable, I don't know whether they've dragged them over from the football field or what, but yeah. Oh, the ones on the trailer? Yeah. Okay, yeah, I hadn't seen those.
Since we're talking about Widows Walk, Bill, do you have any update on the wind turbine? I've noticed a lot recently driving by, like, it's not running, I don't know if there's any.
If Moore may be able to help us out. Al's report on the turbine, I think, is, I understand that you're still missing a part.
Oh, is that why? Okay.
Austria.
Oh, great.
What, what part of it is broken?
China to Austria, so waiting for that part to be delivered.
What part of it is broken?
The same part that was broken prior.
Oh, really?
It's the part that interfaces with wind turbine and the grid.
Generator?
The grid.
Oh, the grid.
So in other words, they talked about it Tuesday night at the Sluggmans' meeting. The part is the thing that.
Synchronizes.
Synchronizes, interfaces with.
Okay.
The grid.
Okay.
Modulates the power into the grid's needs.
Synchronizes the power to the grid?
Yeah, that's it, right.
But we still get paid.
We still get paid?
We still get paid.
Yeah.
We need to get paid, because we're spending $100,000 for that money. Any other liaison reports? Al, are you all set?
Yep. Thank you.
Take a break?
Oh, I can ask one quick question, I was gonna, since you talked about CPC, and now is not the time to be walking, because it's extremely cold, but hopefully in the spring and summer, is there any update to the, the little bridge over the, the trail that goes out along the, the old abandoned railway by the Dunkin' Donuts? There was supposed to be a little bridge that would get you over the Herring River, and then you could walk all the way out to the North River. And I know that at one point, that was like CPC, and then it was like.
CPC funded it, I think, and it's, right now, I think it's somewhere in.
Permitting, right?
Huh?
Thought it was.
It's a permitting issue, I think, conservation.
DEP and Conservation.
I mean, is it going anywhere, or is it just completely stalled? You know?
I think, everybody agrees that it should go, right, but the problem is, is they need the permitting process.
How do you build it?
How do you build it?
It's almost $64,000.
You know, totally, no, it's not really off-subject, but I've been reading a lot of history books and stuff, and like, it seems like when they first built the railroad and the trestle, it's like, they didn't have to worry about any of that stuff.
Of course, no, right. Straight line from here to there.
They didn't have to worry about that when they built half of Boston.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Go live in and put in a pile.
Well, I hadn't thought about it, but the bridge going across Damon's Point must have been pretty low headroom, so not, you know, really cut off the river from boat traffic.
Oh, yeah.
It was a trestle, and I think at one point, there was a movable part to it, or something.
Wasn't really, I didn't, I didn't know that, that would make sense. It's like a swing bridge or something.
Yeah, I thought it was just a straight trestle. And you talk about that, the application, the CPC application for, for coming back up and rebuilding the beach, and doing some protection of the seawall, right, has almost 250, somewhere between 250 and $300,000 to come back up and secure the necessary permits and approvals by the fisheries.
Just for the permits?
Just for the permit.
Yeah, I believe it.
Yeah, beetry nourishment is a very long, laborious process. You're still working at Winthrop, and that started seven or eight years ago.
Yeah, but that's the poster child they put up, and said, this is what we're gonna do. Apparently, the sand has to be certain size.
Yeah.
There's always, there's only certain place you can get it. Yeah.
There was something on, I don't wanna say Plum Island or whatever, but they were, there were these tubes, you bury these tubes in the, the sand, and then you have like these beech grasses or something, and it's supposed to like naturally replenish, and I can't remember exactly how it worked.
That's if you've got dunes, though, there's no, mine, it's not dunes, it's right, you know, the, the foot of the seawall is actually a couple of feet underwater at a high tide.
Yes.
I mean, you're gonna have to do a lot of buildup before you got anything you can actually use.
The problem is, you're, you're sort of shoveling against the tide.
Right, literally, right.
It's just gonna, you know, the, the issues that created that erosion are still there. It's just gonna, you know, the issues that created that erosion are still there. Nothing's changing it, so.
It's only going to get worse.
The one positive thing about it, if you were to do it, it ends up into the extent that the sand gets washed away, gets washed away to the south, and it goes down the rest of the beaches. And it's the right-size sand. And it's already the right size.
We hope it stops, it stops along Oceanside Drive or Lighthouse Point.
Wasn't, I'm trying to remember.
Those are hardened, too.
Yeah, I know.
Wasn't it the Mariner that had an article about those concrete pylons that are like you actually build, almost like a breakwater?
Oh, the, kind of like little pyramids?
Yeah, wasn't that the Mariner? It was a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, I believe it was, yeah, because there's someone in Situate that is working for a company that is distributing them, or he's going to be, anyway.
But that looked like an interesting potential solution, I guess.
I think they stick up out of the water pretty far.
There they go.
They've done that in other places with different kinds of breakwaters, and in fact, that's what they did in Winthrop, basically, to call the Five Sisters or whatever, just breakwaters all along there, and it creates, at one end, it creates a beach, and the other end, it scours it, you know, so it's, you know, it's not really that effective a process other than trying to hold a little bit of sand at one particular location.
Winthrop was $10 million?
Oh, I think it was much more than that.
Well, that's like, I thought I read an article, and I think they owned up to $10 million.
That might have been without the Army Corps involved.
Whatever it was, but it was a significant amount of money.
Yeah, it was.
It's the difference between going to Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks.
You know what, though? Like, tonight, you know, you know I don't go to Dunkin' Donuts very often, but this was $2, $2. I think it's, it's actually less expensive or the same at Starbucks. So, I don't think that Starbucks is that expensive, personally, is what I'm trying to say.
I guess.
Well, it's the Wayne's period, you can open one.
I know.
Do we have an update on Lucky Finn?
Uh, nothing new or different. I've been going there in the afternoons, it's been quite nice. It's been, they seem to have been busy, or be busy, I should say, have a good crowd. They're not preparing food. They have some sandwiches and some salads, but.
So, a friend and his daughter rented it for her birthday party.
That's a good idea.
Which I thought was kind of a neat thing.
Yeah, I did see, they were, on their Facebook page, there was some pictures of another group, I can't remember, some group like Marshfield Women's Society or something, that had also rented it for a small gathering, which I thought was kind of nice.
Bill, is there any possibility, this is just a thought, of moving our meetings back to 7:00, as opposed to 7:30?
What's the sense of the board? I mean, I don't have a problem doing it.
No, I certainly don't have a problem.
I mean, you and I were the two travelers.
Well, I think everybody, yeah.
Well, and actually, I used to be, too.
And Richard, yeah.
And now, I'm working out of the house, so I'm totally fine with that.
Coming from Boston every day.
Yeah.
So, I can usually make 7:00, but not all the time, so. But if that's what everybody else wants to do, I'm willing to try.
Yeah, I'm on the road, so, I mean, if I know it's a Thursday night and I got to be here by 7:00, I'll start heading back earlier, so I schedule my day that way.
Yeah, yeah.
What about you, Eric?
Um, yeah, well, whatever's good for the board.
Get home earlier.
Well, that's the thing, you get home early. I don't know about that. I think you're just going to stay longer.
Dog starts barking. Who's that?
Any update on the proving ground?
So, did you, wait, wait, before we move forward, have we decided to go back to 7:00?
We haven't decided yet.
All right.
That was Bartlett Fields, right?
No, the proving ground is the Toll Brothers with the development. There hasn't been a vote on the sewer. There's going to be in the next, you know, I imagine, the next couple of selectmen's meetings, but I, you know, we really don't know that much about it, and I think after that, they're going to file.
Once they resolve the sewer and make a determination on that, then I think at that point, they'll come in with their application. But they're kind of linear in how they actually process their application. If they come back and they hit a, an issue, they resolve that issue before they go on to the next issue. In other words, they don't leave lingering issues behind them.
As if they get issues here, and they have to repeat the process?
Oh, you mean from the sewer?
Yeah.
No. I don't think, I think it's where not the sewer issues.
No.
No, they might, they might have other issues that would impact their layout and stuff, but the principle would have been established that they didn't tie into the sewer. Another interesting thing is they're looking for a sort of community use of some of the, some of the land, or some, what's the word I'm looking for?
mitigation?
Public benefit, thank you, sir. Yes, some kind of public benefit they can offer. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, you were at the meeting, I wasn't, but one of the things they've discussed is they own the beach right out, you know, straight from the Goulston property down the hill, out to the, out to the beach is the original outline of the property. So, it's been discussed that that beach might become a town beach, but the only trouble is it's all rocks. No one's ever seen a grain of sand there.
Large grain.
In living, in living memory, and nobody's sure what can be really beneficial from it.
I think not to, you know, kind of, you know, go counter to what you're.
Yeah, no, please, I'd be happy to hear more.
But I think all those conversations are kind of offline and not really, you know, intended for TV and, you know, public.
I apologize in that case. It will be interesting to see what develops.
Well, if we get something better than two bocce courts, we're ahead. I think that's what Pulte offered up, was two bocce courts.
Is that right?
Yes.
My word, okay.
So, here's a quick question, though, speaking of the rocks, has that always been that way? I mean, I know Ann and I had a discussion about the Rivermore area used to be very sandy, but the, that's kind of like Egypt area. Has that always been those big rocks, as far back like 100, 200 years ago?
We had some discussion of it, you know, in the department heads, and people who've been here for, you know, 50 years or so, thought that, yes, it had been that way since they had ever remembered. I don't know if you, you had a different take on it.
I moved down to general area in 1970, in 1970, and it was rocks then.
Yeah.
I can't go back much farther than that. The 150 to 200 years, somebody.
Forty-four years.
Well, I mean, I bought that, that book on the Cliff House, which, by the way, was very interesting, if you haven't read that.
No, I'd like to read it.
It's at the Historical Society.
Okay.
And they were talking about the reason that that was, that that was built there is that that was such a beautiful sandy beach at that location.
Right.
And it was like supposedly the best beach between here and Cape Cod at the time. And it still is quite sandy, so I was just curious.
Low tide. Now, I went there in the 50s, and it was a gorgeous beach.
They used to nourish it back in the day.
Did they?
Yes, they did, and that stopped probably the end of the 60s or the beginning of the 70s. They just stopped doing it.
Yeah.
And it used to be the Beach Association, which a year or two ago, handed it back over to the town. They did not want the liability.
This is mine it.
Mine it, or North Situate Beach.
Well, I guess my point was, is that that book talked specifically about how that was so sandy. I didn't know if there was any other book or historical account or anything in our records that talked about at one point maybe that that was a sandy beach, or was, has it always been rocky from the time of the pilgrims?
Oh, we're talking about two different places.
I know that, I know, I know. I guess my point is, I use that as an example.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right.
There's some historical information about that area that dates back 100 or 200 years.
Yeah.
I was wondering if there was a similar book or account.
Yeah, tell you evidence.
Of something of the area that we're talking about with the rocks that's more than Egypt area.
Don't know, don't know, but mine it used to be gorgeous, seriously.
Fifty, sixty years ago. Or, I thought the board did it in 70.
Maybe. I wasn't here in 70.
When you walk down Egypt Beach, you go over the shale, and you bang a left, and you head toward North Situate Beach, you will see all of these pilings.
Mm-hmm.
That used to be houses. And the road, Standish, what was the name of that road?
I don't know.
It moved. They had to put it on the other side of the existing.
Of the berm, yeah.
Over the other side, because those houses were totally taken out in the storm of 78. Gone.
Okay. Yeah, I can believe that. So, yeah, it's a shifting, it's a shifting coastline, for sure.
Okay. Let's go back to work.
Yep.
It's now 8:30 with continuation public hearing, mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District, 50 Countryway. I think we had a couple of outstanding action items.
Yes.
Before we go proceed much farther, let's address those.
Mr. Chairman, my client asked if we could record this video. Is that okay? Or, sorry, not video, just record. Voice memo, audible.
Do you have a problem recording it?
We're on TV. You can just get a copy of that.
Then we would, we'll be able to share accurately with him and his son, the architect, you know, the things that we'll talk about tonight.
So, it's basically, you're just recording it for them?
Yes.
Have no problem at all with that?
Thank you. In his absence, of course, as you know, he's not here. He's dealing with his son.
I think since he wants to see pictures, he can get on YouTube.
Right, I want you on TV.
What's it, about two weeks, a week?
It's a couple of days.
No, it's just a couple of days, yeah.
It should be up probably by Tuesday.
It's on the cable channel, but I didn't know.
Yeah, it's, it'll be up on YouTube.
Okay.
Let me just say, I'm going to address on TV, Mr. Ford, right now. It's zero here in Situate. You're in Hawaii, and we're all very mad at you.
Okay. Tell us, tell us what's transpired since the last time.
Sure. Since the last time we met, I think we had expressed that my client had concerns about one of the conditions having to do with phasing, and then at the last minute prior to the last meeting, we also became aware of the concern of the fire chief. And so, we met with the fire chief after the last planning board meeting. I was there, Mr. Ford was there, Laura was there, and we reviewed the issue that he had with the site. His issue had to do with egress from the site, not access onto the site or around the building, but egress of fire apparatus leaving the site seemed to be his major concern. What I provided to the board is I provided two sketches that provide two different options to address that concern. And we would look to incorporate these sketches into a condition that prior to a pre-construction meeting, or prior to a building permit, whatever the board feels necessary, that we would implement one of these two options. The options that we have before you are constructing onto the end of our existing parking lot an accessway over to Drew Place, over in Abutter's property. We would talk with that Abutter. We already have begun the process of talking to that Abutter to obtain an easement, and that would allow fire apparatus to drive through this parking lot and continue on to Drew Place and access the site. To do that, we would be relocating these two dumpsters. We'd be coming back to you with a new location for those. And at the end here, we would be providing a bollard or a gate that could be removable, so that way fire apparatus could come through in an emergency situation, but it would not be open for general use.
How big is that? How wide is that?
It would be a 12-foot.
12-foot wide?
12-foot wide. The second sketch would be to alter this landscape island at the end here. We may have to shift the parking space or two. I don't think we would lose any parking, but we would then create an access over the bike walkway to Drew Place if we were not able to obtain an easement across the Abutter's property. The fire chief thought, rather than constructing a five-foot-wide paved access, we could construct something a little bit bigger, or provide gravel shoulders off of the bike path that we constructed. He was comfortable with having gravel shoulders, and that would allow a fire truck in an emergency situation to have access from Drew Place. This is over the MBTA property. We'd be going to the MBTA anyways to get access for the walking, the pedestrian path, and he pointed out that he thought the MBTA would look favorable at this because it is increasing fire protection to their property as well, so.
Same width?
The same, the same width.
12 feet?
We would, yeah, between, between the pavement and the gravel shoulders.
The easement.
Yep. And, you know, we would provide greater gravel areas up here at the intersection where we're coming onto the parking lot, and probably the same at the end of Drew Place, just to associate with the turning movements of the trucks coming in and out, so.
So, the chief sees this as a drive-through, rather than a turnaround?
As a drive-through. How, I mean, how we had it on our site plans, we had it so a truck could drive up, and we provided the turning templates for it, drive up, and essentially, this is a T-turnaround like you have at a common driveway. They pull in here, back up, and drive out. His concern was, is if one of the buildings was on fire, and there was an emergency elsewhere, and he had fire apparatus set up out here within these parking lanes, that he wouldn't be able to exit if he had a truck back here, was to provide a secondary means out. And so, that really becomes his, his secondary means would be to be by an easement that way or this way over the MBTA.
And Greg, what's the darker line that you show, I'm trying, is that the fencing that's the, along the bottom?
Along, along the back there.
Yeah.
It was a small retaining wall we had, so we'd end up.
So, the, does the land come down to that?
The land does come down in the back there. It comes down. We're at elevation 27.5, 27.3 right here. Right behind it is elevation 27. I mean, it varies, but it's anywhere from 0 to a foot and a half high of retaining wall. So, we would revise the grading, we'd provide that to you, Laura, and be clear that you'd require, and we'd be okay with that, obviously, having Mr. Chesey review the grading associated with adding the turning templates.
Yeah, because, I mean, it seems like it's a pretty sharp turn, but I guess that's the, I mean, the.
And getting the fire apparatus.
Yeah, the fire apparatus, I mean, the turning radius would have to be approved.
Yeah.
But, I mean, on this, it looks like it's kind of a sharp turn.
And does the, is part of what you're doing, then, maintaining that easement as a clear drive-through?
Yeah.
In other words, during, I mean, during the ownership, but obviously, when the Homeowners' Association or Property Owners Association take over, are they then going to be required to keep that easement clear?
I think that would be, you know, something we'd have to look into. I mean, I think, I think our, our goal when we were just talking about the pedestrian access was having the town, if they were maintaining the pedestrian access, would be having them maintain up to the site, but now that it's emergency access, we'd probably be looking at taking that on, is my guess.
Isn't there lighting in there?
What's that?
Lighting?
There is lighting.
So, that would have to be.
Had to change the design for that, too.
Would have to change the design for that a little bit, again, to provide a minimum 12-foot wide path.
That, that would be, in that scenario there.
In either case, it seems like 12 feet wide was the width that they.
No, I mean, the lighting, you don't, he's not asking to light this, this.
He wasn't looking for lighting.
So, the lighting issue is only if you do, if you go down the walkway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Greg, you're suggesting that this might be approved contingent on the successful negotiation with one or the other parties of, of this access situation?
Correct. Correct.
You'd really have to get the approval of the MBTA to do these improvements, you know, the MBTA?
Right.
And the other main comment that I would have, you know, aside from the turning radius that you, that you guys picked up on, is the other access across Reynolds, I don't know what was said about it. I had to run down the hall and grab another set of conditions. That one really doesn't, you know, really work as far as the chief is concerned, and just practically speaking, there is no easement there. There's some kind of a, like a construction trailer that's fairly good size, that someone's doing like a little welding business or something out of.
Yeah.
And it doesn't look like it's portable, you know?
So he's saying it wouldn't work, or he thinks it'd be difficult to accomplish? I mean, if you add an easement through there, it would certainly work, right?
The chief originally thought we had an easement.
You have to move that business, for one thing. And it looks like it's, it's a going concern. It was on the property when it was sold, or anyway, it's there. But there is no easement that they've obtained over that, so there's no, there's no guarantee.
On the MBTA either, right?
Nope.
There's no easement?
No, but I mean, I don't think anyone's going to build on the MBTA and back here. Yeah, I think it's conceivable that they could.
You'd accept...
So it's all conditioned on, even the, even the walking path is conditioned upon some approval from the MBTA, right?
Yeah.
Which, which one, is this a difficult question? Which one do you, does the applicant prefer?
I know which one I prefer, but I think that Chris would like to have the option to explore both. I personally think that the MBTA access is probably the more logical access. It enhances their property in the sense that fire apparatus would now access the backside of their property as well as ours, so it makes sense to me. But nonetheless, if, you know, we're able to negotiate an agreement, whether it's relocating a trailer or a business, you know, across the neighbor's property, that seems to be a more direct route for the fire truck, myself. So I think it's a kind of a 50-50, really. There are benefits to each path we take. So I'm not, I don't think I could say one way or the other which one is the best.
Yeah, well, you have to, you have to figure out which one you can accomplish, right?
Correct.
Long as the fire chief's okay with either one.
Well, he was, he was very concerned about the easement not being there. And, yeah, there was no, no way to obtain it. They had tried to get it, and they hadn't been able to get it. The other thing, I'm just going to mention, just sort of a common sense approach to me is, if someone's going to buy this property, they're going to have to set up that, that fire access one way or the other. And I think it would be, it's going to take a long time to get, whether they, and a lot of work. So if it's in the MBTA right away, then they get the permission presumably from the MBTA. The other one, you know, who knows if they could ever get it or not. I think you might want to set up, like, maybe this is the preferred one, and then this one, so that the person has some direction, and they're not feeling like, you know, what the heck do they do first?
I actually, well, I guess I don't necessarily agree with that. I think they've identified two options. Go figure out which one you, you can make work, you know? It's really not, as long as the fire chief's okay, if they can get an easement straight through, fine. If it goes around the MBTA, I would leave it to the applicant, because, but I would also make any building permit and all that condition bought happy then, right?
Yeah, okay. It's just, I think both of them are kind of long, long hauls to work out, anyway, so...
I actually, it, it seems like it might be a little challenging to fit in, unless you actually redesigned the path to, to sort of fit in that path for the fire truck down a bicycle path, basically. Because you're going to have to redesign, you're going to have to give the turning radius, you're going to have to have the lights work, you're going to have to make all that work, but I think that's the challenge you have.
I think it's all designable and achievable. Like you said, there's certainly some rework necessary.
Access.
I guess my concern is, when would the decision be made, and who would be making the decision?
I think once we...
Pre-construction?
Yeah, prior, prior to a pre-construction meeting, I think. Once we determined whether or not we could get an easement from the Reynolds property, or after we've met with the MBTA. When we spoke to Al Bangert about going to the MBTA with the pedestrian walkway, you know, his advice, and we originally did speak with the MBTA, was to wait until after we had approval of this board, to go to the MBTA for all the final design on that walkway. I think once we had a commitment from, from either the MBTA or Reynolds, we'd come back to you, provide you with the final details, you could have Mr. Chessie review it, and then we could go forward with the pre-construction meeting at that point.
I guess, my question may have been somewhat misleading, but my real question is, is that I'm getting concerned in the number of things that we're putting off to be done just before the pre-construction. All right, I've got Morning Glory's, and we've got to make peace with them, and we've got to see some documentation to that effect. We've got to see some documentation to this. The fire access, yet to be talked about is, is to come back up on the phasing, and we talked about coming back up and have final phasing before the... And I guess, my take on it is, I understand those issues, and I understand the alternatives associated with them, but I think that the decision as to which one and how it's implemented in the final approval of the plan should be the planning board. Which means you'd have to come back here prior to... Now, I don't know what that does to your timeline.
All right, I'm not sure I follow your...
Prior to the pre-construction?
Prior to reconstruction.
Oh, yeah, for final, I think, I'm assuming that's why it hurts, Greg, is that the final design would come back to the planning board for review and approval, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I think it's necessary for a productive pre-construction meeting.
Well, that's, that's the ones that we've got so far.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, in the past, some of these have, the pre-construction meeting has just been like, for instance, the town planner, like approval. And this one would be a little bit different, because it's actually coming back for us.
It would come back to us prior to going to...
Prior to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would come back for a hearing.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so those are the two alternatives that we've got for that. Why don't we talk about construction phasing? Anybody, everybody else set on fire?
Could I ask one question? Just the, the MBTA route. How, how much room is there back there? Kind of dimensionally?
Dimensionally?
Yeah, just before it becomes a pro, I mean, is there plenty of room?
Where the wall stops, basically.
I'm thinking about where he proposed, where he's proposing the retaining wall going this way.
This is fair, I've ridden my, my bike with my kids back there, and somehow I've always associated with about 15 feet.
From, from our parking lot to the chain-linked fence that demarcates the railroad bed is on this side, from our property line to the chain-linked fence at this location right here, it's about 18 feet.
18 feet?
18 feet. And it gets wider...
That's what the fire truck would have to negotiate, right? Unless they would move the fence.
Exactly. And I, I don't think they'd move the fence.
Yeah, I doubt that.
So, you know, what we would do is, we would look at taking away all, if not, or part of this island. And what may happen is, the walkway path right here, which is in a landscaped island, may become part of this access, and we may take up one parking space here, but we would gain a parking space here. So that whole thing might shift one, one parking space in that location, just to help with the turning movements there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? How about phasing?
So the other, the other condition that we had a question on, or wanted to suggest a phasing on, was condition number 19. We provided in our January 2nd letter a proposed phasing. It differs slightly from the phasing construction sequence that's listed on the design plans. We understand the planning board's concern, the planning board's concern is building out building A, preserving the historic building in front, and getting the commercial space out there. In looking at the site, what we have proposed is, we've proposed a sequence that will allow us to, you'll note on the plans, we have a construction entrance, which comes around at the bottom of the site right here. That construction entrance really is effective in the existing conditions, if you look at the existing location. What we were proposing is, we're proposing to construct the temporary access road around the existing building, and that allows a lot of room out here for larger trucks to get in and out. 18-wheelers could get in and out of this site, the cement trucks could get in and out of this site, because they have the turning maneuvers into this space, and they'd be able to negotiate around the existing building, okay? And we think that's beneficial, because if we start building out back, and we build building C and building B, we'd be able to import all of the fill, all of the concrete, all of the large bulk delivery to the site would be coming in through this haul road, okay? If we build building A first, right up front, it has to be built 15 feet off the front property line. It greatly reduces the ability for any of those large bulk shipments in. We'd be able to get smaller trucks, the pickup trucks, the vans around, but the majority of the fill, the concrete, all of the large items would now be forced into the Morning Glory's accessway. So we're trying to alleviate the concern there as well with our large shipments to the site. So what we've proposed here is, we've proposed that we would, one, we'd construct the temporary access around the building to the back of the site. And then, secondly, we would excavate and pour the foundations for buildings B and C on the back of the site. Thirdly, we import all of the material for the back of the site to complete the substantial earthwork, all of the drainage, all of the filling, all of the rough grating, while we have this haul road in place that's available. We begin framing for buildings B and C. At that point, we would excavate the foundation for building A out in the front. We'd remove the accessway and remove the barn and connector addition on the existing building. We'd then move building A to its new foundation location. The foundation for building A is going to have to be constructed in two parts. You're going to have to construct the first part for the main box that we're moving first, and then there'd be a second excavation, a second pour for the remainder of the building. Once building A is moved to its new location, we would install all of the utilities within the shared access roadway, up the Morning Glory's park to the back of the site. We'd construct the rear utilities and construct the site work at the rear of the site, and button up the site work from there up to Country Way. Building C would become finished first. We would focus the framing and the interior finish work on building C. We'd apply for an occupancy permit on building C. Framing would be ongoing for building B, that would still be going on at that stage. Building A, we would construct the rear portion of building A and get it to a weather-tight condition. We'd get the roof, the windows, the siding, from the exterior, it would look like a finished product. Building B would then become complete. We would not be issued a certificate of occupancy or begin renting units until that building A was completely weather-tight. Then, after building B is completed, we could focus on the interior fit-out of building A. The building A interior would be last. Constructing it in that sequence allows a couple of things. Building C is constructed, it's available for occupancy by relocated tenants from number 50 Country Way. It lessens the burden on them during the project.
How many tenants are in 50?
There's five units in there right now.
Okay.
Secondly, it allows building A to remain during the construction of building C. This provides positive cash flow for bank funding purposes. The project, while it's being constructed in the back, it's still generating an income off of the five units here, while we have that haul road in, and the majority of the back construction is ongoing. So, the bank that's funding the project has an income here from the front, as opposed to a site that's not producing any cash flow. Three, the schedule puts the burden on the applicant to complete building A to a weather-tight condition, because the requirement is, is that building A becomes a weather-tight condition before any occupancy permits are issued through your building B. Furthermore, gives building A flexibility on its interior fit-out for the commercial tenants, providing the finished products, the conference rooms, exactly how the floor spaces are going to be finished out, what the finishes are going to be. We don't know who the tenants are going to be yet. It allows building A to stay in its existing location, while the foundation, the majority of the site's constructed, and it allows us to use the temporary haul road, thus alleviating traffic over Morning Glory's for most of the major construction as well with that schedule.
And when do you have to make the, the second, the emergency egress function?
I imagine we'd have to have that in place probably before a certificate of occupancy on that back building.
On the first one, yeah. All right, what am I, I'm missing here? I see step seven as moving building A main box.
Yeah.
So that's, obviously, you can't do that with tenants in the building.
No.
And you haven't completed building C for occupancy until step 10.
Yeah. Yeah. It gives the people there further time to relocate.
Okay, but you can't, you're not...
We're not taking...
You don't have a situation where those people can move into building C before you take their homes away from building A.
Probably not going to be the case, no.
You're just trying to maximize revenue.
Maximize the time. Maximize the revenue, I mean.
Are these residential units?
Yes.
It would also minimize...
A lot of trucks going by.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
Yeah, right.
They're going to be gone before you get building B or C done.
What happens to their parking and their traffic in and out for building A?
Right now, they have a, a parking lot at the back of Morning Glory's, and they have spaces out back there. I imagine that...
Go back to the, to the existing conditions, yeah.
I imagine we would have, during construction hours, that they wouldn't be allowed to use the spaces out here, and they do have this parking available to them at the back.
So all the construction vehicles are going to go on that haul road?
Would be...
And none on the access?
I, I think the majority of them would be coming down this haul road. That would certainly be the, the intent.
What about, like, a safety, I'm sorry?
No, they can't.
That'd be crazy. So they must have to park up front, right? I'm just saying, that other location you identified?
Right here?
Yeah, with, with earth-moving equipment and everything else you're doing?
This is the, I mean, this, this is a paved area. It's well demarcated on the ground. I mean, the foundation's back here for that building.
I'm thinking of the earth and, and all the big head of equipment moving in and around there.
Yeah.
Wouldn't park my car there.
Are they going to try to fence off the actual construction site part of the property, or...
$7,500 a year?
Will they have to for safety reasons with the, you know, building apartments?
I don't think... Probably a thousand.
And you can't have any open trenches, you know, all those issues?
Yeah, so, yeah. They can't have an excavation, you know?
60 to cover it up.
For a period of time, so...
Yeah.
And Greg, with the construction of the haul road, there's no demolition yet, right? It goes around the, what we're calling the barn part of the building?
Yes. It's around the barn building.
So from start to finish, following your timeline, what, what do we look at?
When do we get to step five, actually excavating for building A? From, from notice to proceed to step five, how long does that take? I mean, I'm asking for exact hours.
I'm a lawyer.
Yeah.
Maybe six months.
Couple of months. Probably no less than three. You'd want to get all of the earthwork done in the back, and the two foundations poured, so that's considerable amount of time before you...
Mine's supposed to be historical.
Bill, you were most vocal in your concern, not the only concerned person about the phasing. What do you think of this?
If I was Bill in it, that's exactly what I would do. I, I think that we're, we're building an Alamo out of those five people, the five, the five renters. I'm not sure that the five, if, if the economics of this project depends on getting three months' rent out of those people, right, then I would tell you that you're in the wrong business, and you ought to sit there and pack it up and go home. So, so I also think that out of the five people that are there, of the five units, not all of them are going to put up with coming back up and living in a construction zone.
Yeah.
Because regardless of what happens, those diesel engines start at 6 o'clock, and you can't argue that they can't run their engines when they got, you know, the MBTA running theirs all night long.
Unless there was a discount. If I was a renter, I'd drop them a hundred bucks off.
Then there's less reason...
Yeah.
There's, there's less reason, so I mean, so, and I can't imagine that, that the people that are renting there are going to come back up and move to what I think I would submit is, is a higher rent in the back. up and move to what I think I would submit is a higher rent in the back, right? So either they got a red hearing or got an Alamo there, I'm not sure which. So my take on it is I want to assure that that building gets moved, and I want to make sure that the building gets moved intact, and I don't want to have you come back and sit there and say, "I've got my two big buildings in the back, and by God, I just can't make that building work. It just doesn't work."
And we talked last time about some kind of performance bond on that. I didn't see mention of it.
I didn't see that either. I figured they were fine-tuning the numbers so they could present them tonight.
I know. It was known. We didn't really follow up with the insurance company on it. Chris, that was infeasible, yeah. As far as I know, Chris didn't inform us that that was an option. I think that the plan would be that the security for, you know, building A is, as we discussed, the significant investment in building B that would not be allowed to be occupied until building A was weather tight, ready to go.
My thinking is I'd make it so dear to you that you can't, you don't dare walk away from putting building A out there. So I mean, if it was...
If you followed this construction schedule...
For sake of argument, if it was a three-dollar project, I would sit there and say that I'd take a dollar, a minimum of a dollar, and sit there and tie that into coming back up and having an A, and then I would release it when A's open. I think there's a difference between moving A and making it airtight, weather tight, than coming back up and making it useful. So I think that somewhere before you get your, the buck that I'm holding, assuming it's a three-dollar project, this would be contingent upon getting that so that it's available for use. So it's more than just moving it.
Oh, I agree, and I think that's why the weather tight function is used. In other words, it's not just moving the building. I don't think that anybody's going to invest, to buy the project and then really look at it and only build building C and then not do, I don't think it's economically feasible for a developer or a bank to lend if that's the only part of the project that someone ends up doing. Because even if they build building B, they can't occupy it until A is finished. So, you know, what you're looking at is the only logical financial component is building C. So if that's all that's there, if someone truly doesn't want to do building A, this project doesn't fly. You can't do it. It just doesn't make sense monetarily.
Yeah, but you could get in a situation where if I had, like, the real estate economy was a few years back, that all of a sudden I've got the big building in the back, and there's really no incentive at all for me to come back up and put more.
But anything else?
Because it's a situation where I'm putting in multiple units to get one. So if I've got a demand for three, I'm putting in thirty.
I guess my point is, is that if that's what happens, I don't think the developer's going to be the one dealing with it anymore. I don't think it could sustain the debt service necessary, you know, for that project. The rentals in that building C alone probably, in all likelihood, would not satisfy the bank. The bank would take it over and have to finish the project.
What if the wording, instead of said "weather tight," what if it said the wording was "and constructed to the level of the plan," meaning the back portion of that is all built out?
Well, constructed so that all it takes is tenant fit-out.
Well, I guess, because my, what I'm thinking about is, like, I think what Bill's trying to say is, the house could be moved, and something could fall apart, and then you could still make it weather tight because it's the existing house, but then there's this whole other section of the building that is meant to be built upon, built, you know, the back behind the house.
Well, I think that's what building A is first. It's not, it's not part of the building.
Yeah, I think the weather tight...
Building A is the whole building.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I want to make sure that we're clear on.
You're just saying building A is weather tight, right?
Not just the relocated piece, it's the whole thing.
So when you drive by, you think it's weather tight.
Because they say move building A main box, right?
Right. That's what, okay.
Building A is complete building A.
Well, then, that's what I'm trying to say, is we should at least put that in the language. Because the way that I was reading this is they could just move the main box and then make it weather tight.
No.
This is defined as...
I know that's not what you mean. I know that's not what you mean.
That's not the intent.
I know that's not the intent.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, to alleviate maybe some of Bill's concern, was if we put that language that says it has to be the entire building that's weather tight and complete.
Sure.
Would that, would that help? Or was that what you were thinking along Bill?
When I first read it, I thought they were looking at just the little box.
Oh.
Talking the entire...
No, the entire building A.
But I went back and moved the pieces around on a piece of concrete, and...
Yeah. I could see where you might think that, but no, the point is, the purpose was to build out the entire building A. Just leave the interior flexible enough to deal with tenants and commercial tenants and whatnot. But the outside of the building would look completely finished, be weather tight, ready to go. Not just the relocation of the historic portion, the entire building.
Well, I'm thinking on that one, the intent of the barn is to leave the barn there while you're building your haul road?
That's the intent right now, is to leave the barn there.
Have you looked at any possible reuse for that barn?
We have. We're looking at relocating into another property. We don't know if that will be feasible or not.
Is there an issue that came up about this being part of, the barn being part of the historic?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A level of concern there.
Looking into some of the background for the, for the house, it's called the Weatherby House, there's some information about a National Historic District that the historic consultants or the MBTA delineated, and this house is in it. And the house is contributing to the National Historic District, and then they separately list the barn, and they also list the barn as contributing to the National Historic District. So we, Bill and I, met with Doug Smith, who's the chairman of the Situate Historic Commission, just to kind of sound him out. I don't know if you want to talk about that meeting, Bill, or...
No, go ahead.
Okay. He's pretty supportive of kind of letting the barn go as long as the house can be preserved. You know, if the house can't be preserved, then I think, you know, he'd like call in the demolition delay bylaw and all those things. But I think as long as there's an interest in preserving the house, he wouldn't like make an issue of the demolition delay. Or he can't really speak for his whole committee, but this is, you know, what he would do if, you know, if it were up to him. So.
I know Mr. Ford's looked at the barn. He does not want to rip it down if he doesn't have to. He is actively looking at relocating it. I can't guarantee you that's going to happen, though.
Yeah, we might take on it as, I think, if you did a good faith effort on it, because the barn itself as it exists today is clearly not the barn, the historical barn that was there before. The building, I think, when the building gets moved, if I was to move the barn today, I'm just going to get an updated barn. But I think that the building itself, the house, if I move that, then I, and then I've got it's an entirety. So what I'm seeing today and what I can compare to the historical pictures looks to be the...
Yeah, I didn't even realize it was a barn. I was emailing Laura about it.
Well, they got windows and skylights.
Yeah, it doesn't even look like a barn.
A gentleman's barn, I guess.
So I...
So how are you going to guarantee me that, A, I can move that house? Because that's, that kind of lingers there. And two is that I can, that I'm going to be able to put something down to hold your feet to the fire to make sure that you move it?
Occupancy permits for building B. Without that, no one could afford to do this project. Can't do it.
What's the sequencing between C and B in terms of when they'll be ready for occupancy?
Well, C would be first. Oh, you mean the timeframe? I don't, that's a, that's a building question. I'm not sure how long it would take.
And it sounds like you're framing them in parallel, so are they going to basically be ready both at the same time?
I wouldn't say parallel. I think you're going to have a framing, my guess would be...
Well, it says begin framing building C and D.
But I think you're going to have the framing crew work on one site first, then go to the next one, and then go to the next one. I think, but that's probably what's going to happen. Framing crew, foundation crew's going to move around, framing crew's going to go in behind, finish roofing crew, roofing crew's going to go behind, finish crew's going to go behind. You follow, that's really the flow of the construction. I don't think you're going to have enough people there to frame both of those buildings at the same time. My guess would be, my guess would be that they would move through the site in a logical manner. So I don't know what the timeframe would be from jumping from one to the next. I'm sure that as one completes, the next one will start, you know? But I think that, I think, you know, again, to me, it's the occupancy permits that's the killer. I mean, if you can't get it, you've now, you cannot afford the project. It has to happen before you can do that. And if building A has to be, the historical structure has to be moved, building A has to be built in weather tight before you can occupy, I mean, I don't think there's a greater incentive you could put on someone.
And the bank is going to demand that.
Yeah.
Because they're going to, they're going to say, "We loaned you all this money to build this thing, and now you can't rent it because of the stipulation?" They're not going to stand for that.
The bank is going to require them to achieve that building A status because they're not going to have the income to support the debt service to the bank's satisfaction on building B unless they do that. So even if you did decide that a bond was necessary, I don't think a bond's effective. I truly don't. I mean, whatever money you put aside, I mean, think about the logistics of that. Okay, we put this money aside. It doesn't really stop the scenario. What stops the scenario is the occupancy permits and the lender who's driving the boat, not the money.
So why don't we tie this into the occupancy permits of building C?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we tie it into the occupancy permits of building C?
Well, because I think that, again, in order to balance...
That would really motivate them.
Of course it would, yeah. The problem is, is that would handcuff the developer, the owner, to have a longer period of debt service without any income. So I think it's, as a board, we, as citizens, we have to balance the equities here, and that is satisfying the lender's desire to, obviously, loan on the project but yet generate an income, satisfy the developer's ability to actually build this, generate an income stream, and be able to finish the project without going bankrupt. It's kind of the same reason why we won't want to touch the main house until we absolutely have to, because it is generating not a lot of money every month, but enough probably to cover some big portion of the debt service. So to tie it into building C would probably, unless you've got, you know, a huge company like Toll Brothers or Pulte to come in here and do it, it's not going to work for a regular developer that we even found our interest in the project.
Looking at this sequence, by the time you get the occupancy permit for C, you've already excavated for A.
Yeah.
Presumably, that's the entire building A.
Yeah.
Right, that's number five.
Right. You've already moved the main box to the new location.
Yeah.
So you've got a substantial amount of work that's done on building A before that occupancy permit kicks in.
Well, in theory.
In theory. Well, no, in practice. I mean, this is what you're going to hold, hold to, right? Is it not?
It's logical in the sense of what, what assets we have on the site at the time, when you think about it. You know, the excavation company will be there doing their thing when they do the foundation, so they're going to excavate for building A. You know, it's the economy of scale. Building, the historic building will be moved because the excavation company wants to get off the site, and they finish their foundation work. The form, concrete form company is going to want to get off the site, because, you know what I mean? So it really is logical. I think Greg did a great job of napping it up.
When are they quarrying the foundation for building A? For all of building A?
We have it after B and C.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's going to be in conjunction with number seven is what it would be.
Yeah.
Move building A to main docks.
Prior to number, prior to number seven.
Yeah, yeah. It's poured into parts. They're going to pour the first part, they're going to move the main box, and then they're going to pour the second part of the foundation. It would be right...
Before...
All right, but before...
Before they're looking for occupancy permits for C.
Before ten, presumably, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we might want to insert that as a step.
Because the, before occupancy for C, you have to have the facilities on the Morning Glories access, where you have to have the utilities and have the accessway into the back of the site, so...
Right. That doesn't happen until number eight.
And you've got to be sort of past the phase where you need concrete trucks rumbling around the center.
Yeah, exactly.
And creating the parking lots and site work, you know, that all has to be done. You don't want, you're not going to have the big trucks back there with that going.
How do I ensure that building A, the old structure, the box, can be moved?
Don't they have a...
Well, we went through, yeah.
We've had, the architect, Jim Sandell, has walked through it. I think you heard from him early on in this process. And Mr. Ford has a quote from the mover to move the building already.
Can't he just move the building? I'm sure he can.
My concern is if I'm worried about the Alamo with the five families in it or the five renters, there's got to be at some point where you sit there and say, "I'm not going to move that building."
Well, I don't think we have that option. That building has to be moved. That was, you know, that was part of it.
Well, if you follow this scenario, then we won't release certificates of occupancy until the building A main box has been relocated and the full foundation for building A has been poured.
Pretty much, yeah.
And the utilities, the site work and all that for building A has been done, right?
And the access, the fire access. It has to be.
Do you think that I'm going to be able to sleep at night now?
I mean, you could say...
I think you will sleep terribly solidly now.
The, for the conditions, you could say, you know, steps one through nine must be completed before a certificate of occupancy will be issued, which then that kind of ties you into those exact steps, right?
To the extent I get control over occupancy.
And we're only talking, we're talking here about permanent certificates of occupancy. So they could still be issued a temporary. And couldn't people rent on a temporary certificate of occupancy? I mean, I guess...
I don't know the answer to that, Laura.
Okay, because a lot of times that seems to kind of...
I know you can, you can occupy on a temporary certificate of occupancy, so presumably it means you could rent.
You'd be renting, yeah. And they would, this is, usually when these types of conditions are written, they're interpreted as meaning a permanent certificate of occupancy. So you'd have people renting. You just wouldn't be able to sell the whole project to someone else, but you'd have people renting, I believe.
That's coming a little fine.
That's not, that's, that's possible, I think, if you write it that way, but the way it's traditionally been interpreted while I've been here has been just to mean a permanent...
Any, any, I mean, I would leave it into the building inspector's hands as to whether he determines it should be a full occupancy or a temporary. You can, you can have a fully built out property and then get, only get a temporary certificate of occupancy because they put the wrong type of glass in a window. I'm saying that because it happened to my house. They didn't put a special tempered glass in the window, and Mr. Duggan was kind enough to issue a temporary occupancy so that we got the window replaced. So, so I think that, I really think that that's really, you know, the building inspector...
What I'm really talking about is it doesn't have anything to do with whether there's tempered glass or not. It has to do with whether you'd accomplish steps one through nine.
Yeah.
So temporary or permanent.
Yeah, I agree. And if you'll see that, you know, the way Greg wrote this is that number 10, it's sequential. Complete building C, certificate of occupancy issued begins renting units. That's, that's the 10th step. So one through nine has to happen before we complete building C.
I think if you don't want any certificate of, I think you, I think it needs to be spelled out. I'm not sure of the exact, you know, the exact way you would get the words in there, but I think it's that, you know, that any certificate of occupancy would, would not be issued until...
I think that covers it.
Yeah.
I mean, you could say any perenns, temporary or permanent, right?
Yeah.
Certificate of occupancy will not be issued until steps one through nine have been satisfactorily completed.
And then they really can't start renting the units.
No, you're not going to get a temporary.
You think that ties it up tighter than if I asked for a performance bond?
Yeah, I think so.
I think the financial...
The only, the only situation you get into is whether...
But don't you think the bank is going to hold feet to the fire?
Get into a downturn in the economy.
Yeah, I mean, it's just their...
You don't have to do it. It's going to be the bank that's going to create the pressures.
Yeah.
But I mean, you, you look at the Riverway property, and the bank isn't, like, nothing's, nothing's happening to make that front building be built. And the rights to it were sold off, and this could, I mean, any property, I think you could do the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, this is certainly a more, this is a much larger percentage of the total than that building is a Riverway property.
Yeah.
So, my way of clarification on Mr. Pritchard's point about the occupancy permit. So, we complete items one through nine, and Mr. Duggan, and Building C gets completed, but Mr. Duggan issues a temporary occupancy permit for, I don't know, Unit 20, Unit 9. That's okay, right? That's the way I interpret your situation for whatever, like you said, maybe it's for tempered glass, or it's for a handrail or something to that effect.
No, I'm saying, if one through nine are done.
We can get either permit.
If they're not done, no.
Yeah, okay.
You can get any permit that's available to you.
Yeah, any that the building inspector feels comfortable with.
Any way, shape, or form.
That's what, that's what I thought we were doing.
Would you be amenable to changing the wording in five to excavate and pour foundation for entire Building A?
Well, the, I don't think we can excavate the entire foundation for Building A.
You've got to move it first.
Yeah, we've got it to two pieces, so.
And how about then insert another step?
Let's insert another step.
Number seven.
Seven A.
Let's insert another step.
Or just add on to seven, which is move building to new location.
Yeah.
Then excavate and pour remaining foundation for Building A.
Second phase, or whatever you want to call it. Second phase of Building A foundation.
You know, obviously, you want to have as much work done on Building A before Building C's released as feasible, because it just incentivizes you to complete Building A all the more.
And then I would say, item 12, is when you say weather tight, I'm assuming that includes all the roughed-in utilities and all that kind of stuff, too.
And-
Roughed in to the extent that it's available for fit-out.
Yeah, from the inside, yeah, from the outside going in. I would think that that would mean all the, you know.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just saying available. I understand you're building a box that has to get built out for tenants, so.
Sure.
And again, is it, can we put the word entire, construct entire Building A to weather tight? I mean, maybe that's what you're implying, but I think it'd be nice, again, if the downturn in the economy, whatever.
On, on-
It's number 12.
Entire Building B, Building C.
Well, in this case, it's a little bit, no, the reason it's different because they're moving a piece of it, right? So, they could, I'm just theoretically, they could say, "That's Building A now. Everything falls apart, the economy's terrible."
Don't really think they can. Building A is called out as this, right?
Building A is the whole thing. The whole thing, that's Building A.
We've defined it that way.
Okay.
I'm just trying to avoid creating converse confusion the other way.
Okay.
Right? We have to complete all Building B.
To tighten it further, and I'm not sure I want to, I want to do this, but I'll put it out there, you could have the condition that the residential portion of Building A be complete and only the commercial portion be set up so that tenant fit-up, you know, is still required. Because a lot of that building's residential, so that's got nothing to do with, you know, who's going to move in.
Yeah, but it's the retail that makes the whole project work.
Agreed, but one of the arguments I heard for not finishing off that building in a certain, to a certain degree, was that tenant improvements would have to depend on which tenants moved in. And so, we needed to wait until we rented it out before we finished the building.
The retail, that's right.
But for the retail, that's correct. For the residential, it's incorrect.
Does that make sense?
I mean, I understand that. I think looking at the funding objectives, going back to what Steve said, Building B is going to be ready for occupancy because they're going to have been working on that while the foundation for A is being poured, while the foundation for A, the building's being moved, et cetera. Building C is going to, or Build B, excuse me, is going to be ready for occupancy and be ready to start generating cash flow to fund the remaining residential units of Building A.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Yeah, if we wait all the way to do, to actual build out of the residential units in A, because of the way that crews are going to move through the site, you're talking, you're taking out the financial benefits of getting Building C rented out during the construction process, you know, before it's finished. So, I would strongly request that we don't go that route, because I think it would handcuff the develop, myself.
Okay, well, as I said, I'm not sure I want to do it, but I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah.
So, item 12 then ends up with a completely weather tight exterior, finished siding, roofing. What does the inside look like? Is it insulated? Is it, I mean, how does, what do you envision here will actually be done?
Probably plaster, probably rough utilities going in, you know.
I mean, it's going to be rough.
Getting ready for blueboard and plaster. That's what it is.
So, it's going to be wired, then?
It's going to be weather tight.
Yeah.
I don't know if all the utilities will be run throughout the building.
So, it won't be necessarily insulated, then?
Not necessarily, I don't think. But from the exterior, it would appear finished, you know, if you're driving by.
You can't insulate it till you wire it. You can't wire it, at least for tenants, until you know where they're going.
But the real remaining work would be interior construction work, then. There wouldn't be any exterior to speak of, exterior construction work to speak of.
Correct.
So, then theoretically, Building B would be completely rented in a perfect world. Building C would be all rented, and then your crews would just be finishing up everything, the residential as well as the retail, commercial space portion.
Again, to the extent that tenant fit-out would be reserved for the commercial stuff, you know, you're probably talking just building the box and then letting them come in and do their, whatever they want, countertops.
Yeah, I mean, that could happen six months down the line, depending on when the tenants move in.
Anytime a tenant changes, right, it's going to happen.
Correct, yeah, sure. Understood.
I think there's some other pieces that really need to be worked in here besides just the construction of the buildings. While you're working with this site, you're, first of all, you're setting up a sequence that's kind of new, because, you know, we haven't really seen this before. And the whole control of erosion and sedimentation and stormwater, you know, temporary, you know, stormwater control, all of that, I think, needs to be spelled out also and worked in with this sequence, so that-
Well, requirement so that a SWIP and a NIMTEES get submitted, so we could certainly include all of that at that point.
Yeah, but that's something that, yeah, I think on any site gets submitted, and we always ask for some kind of, you know, erosion plan, erosion control plan, so, and the whole sequence of the erosion control. So, I think that really should be worked in here. The other thing I think really needs to be spelled out is, and you may have to either talk to Neil or talk to someone who's, you know, got a, you know, contractor's license or, you know, but you're going to need to probably separate off portions of the site that people are living in while other sections are being built. So, how are you going to do that? And, you know, I think, I think there needs to be a plan that shows all of that. And, you know, in particular, if, you know, both the living areas and the access and the parking, you know, how are those going to be, how are those going to be managed so you don't have little kids, like, running around a construction site getting hurt?
I respect you there, Laura, but I think for the purposes of what we're trying to accomplish, they've got sort of the major sequencing in place, right? I think all of the engineering and safety planning and erosion control planning has to be integrated into this as part of their final design, right? But I don't know that we need to spell it out in terms of, oh, we need to have erosion control before we release, you know, certificate of occupancy kinds of-
Well, I wasn't talking about that necessarily, but I think it should be spelled out at which points, you know, there should be a plan and some kind of a sequence so that the erosion control goes along with this. So, if you're having, if you're having the basins, you know, basins in the back, but we, the board really hasn't seen a plan showing that, because this is, you know, this is all fairly new. So, I think you should really get one.
Yeah, I think it very-
And I have a chance to look at it and approve it along with everything else that you approve.
There's a series of plans that might be at various stages of this, and site utilization plans are what I'm used to seeing, and it has things like erosion control. It has contractor parking, lay-down areas, temporary fencing, those sort of things. So, there might be three or four of those because of the phasing, you know, this is what the site will look like when this is going on and the next phase, it's going to look this way, and, you know, that kind of thing.
I think that was always going to be the case, no matter how you sequence this stuff, right?
Right, exactly. We always were going to need that.
We saw it before, it was part of what you approved, so this just changes all of that.
Yeah.
So, but I think, you know, in particular, where you've got Morning Glories right next door, you've got drainage on Morning Glories property that's going to be affected by what goes on on the site, you know, you want to show how that's going to be protected, you know, how the Reynolds property, which, you know, who knows what's going to happen there, how that property's going to be protected. You know, so I think all of that needs to be done and take this into account.
Into the decision, Laura, or in?
No, in the decision, because that's, you know, that's really part of what the planning board is approving.
I guess I'm not part of the construction team, so I just assumed that all of those sort of logistical things would be dealt with during the pre-construction phase where you sit down-
There should be sort of sedimentation plans in the draft.
Oh, no, we have those. I meant more like where we're going to do lay-downs and contractor parking and things like that. It would seem to me that those types of issues in children, where are they going to go not get hurt, are the things that I would think the contractors would work with you in the building department to make sure that those safeguards were in place, you know?
Where you're trying to sequence everything so carefully, it would be worth it to have someone with the right background really look at this and think about how it's really on their work, is it really doable? And, you know, this is the plan you have, your erosion and sedimentation, and, you know, it's probably fine, but I think someone should, you know, Greg should probably take a less look at it to see whether, whether this is going to work in terms of moving this building, whether you're proposing to move it, and, you know, how are you going to protect that building from, you know, sediments and water?
Yeah, explain your-
Yeah, I mean, we provided an erosion and sedimentation control plan based on the previous layout, and I agree, it would definitely need to be revised or updated to the new sequencing here. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be done at this point in time, though. I think I would want the input of the contractor and the site general superintendent and get their input on what the final staging areas are going to be and how they're planning on doing the temporary fencing and the temporary accesses onto the site. I think I'd want that input before I put that out there. I think-
Isn't that typically done in the pre-construction conference?
No, it's typically done now. It's typically done now. I think you're just, you're, you've already put a lot of things down the road for whoever purchases this, this project, and this is one that the board usually looks at and approves as part of your overall approval. And I think you'll be setting a precedent where, you know, it may be difficult to get a realistic erosion control plan. I mean, all we're really talking about is making the plan realistic in terms of, you know, what you're doing. And maybe it just takes a quick review of it without anything necessarily very elaborate.
And I think, I think he can do that. I think what we asked him to do was, was to be able to provide some sort of sequencing that would show me that that protected that house, that house was under evil. That was the exercise, that was your homework assignment. And I think that you've come back and, you know, the tweaking that we've done to it, I think is, is basically come back up and at least demonstrated to me that I think that I'm more comfortable now than I was earlier. Do I still get a warm fuzzy feeling I'm going to sleep every night? I'm not sure about that yet. But I don't think that's your problem, no more than your financing is my problem. But I think it does make sense to come back up. It protects it by keeping it away 15 feet off the road. It's not where I want it while you're building. And I think that the occupancy permit is probably a better solution than folding a bond.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right, Bill, when you, when you said, "That's how I would sequence it," other than if I were ready to do this, I might have crews working on B and C at the same time in parallel, not wait for one to put to the other, so. Minimize my construction interest costs.
That's just a lawyer speculating. That may be the case. They may have a crew doing all of it at once. I'm just, not a builder.
But I think it makes sense to sequence it this way, you know, from the perspective of just how you get in and out of the site, work your way forward, that kind of thing.
And I think Laura's point is, I think it's also valid, is to come back up and make sure that the controls that we have in place are timely for what we're working in at a particular phase. And I think it's just a matter of just matching up the phases to your sedimentary plan and sediment plan.
You know, when you bid this out, you're going to have questions from the people who are bidding it, you know, "Where can I go? Where can't I go? What measures do I have to take? What can I avoid? It's going to affect the pricing that they give you." So, you're going to have to have those answers, and I think we'd like to see them. And maybe and likely, the contractors that you finally select are going to propose changes or, you know, settle modifications, whatever, and that's okay. But for everybody's benefit, you're going to need an overall concept and some level of detail about how this is going to work.
Go and speak to Douglas.
Sorry. Give me an interrupt.
Well, the ruins don't win often enough that we need to make this thing when it happens.
So, you know, I think it's a good idea. I'm kind of agreeing with Laura.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to figure out, what's the right sequencing here? And what Laura's suggesting is, is an actual sequencing drawing of some kind, or?
Yeah, I think it's something similar to what you have, but, you know, incorporating these, these different steps.
For erosion control purposes, right?
Yeah.
So, like a page one, page two, this is phase one?
No, just something like that with all the, all the steps on it, but just have everything, you know, have everything, yeah, maybe, I don't know exactly how you're going to do it.
You might end up saying, okay, the back half, this is what it looks like, whatever, but.
But I think in general, what we're saying is, where the board agrees with the sequencing or the option that's been on the table here. It's just that there needs to be a little bit more information each step.
And most of that's all reusable, because you have to do it for your SWIP plan anyway, so it's all reusable information.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get out of it. I realize it's intended.
I just, if it's for the purposes of describing the erosion control during the phasing process, which we have just given you, which is, Laura said, new, then that makes sense. If it's for the purposes of determining where, like, a lay-down area or the kids that are occupying the place are going to play, I don't think we're ready to say that at this point, you know?
No, I mean, I think that's all something that the contractor's going to have to work out with the building department, that that would all have to be done before the pre-construction.
Sure.
So.
We can, we can handle that as our homeowner, who's still a broker.
I think if, if, certain areas have got to be fenced off, that's going to affect how you do all this, so I think-
And that's, you'll show that on the plan?
Yeah.
You'll likely show the different areas that will be fenced off.
As I say, I think you got everything there, it's just a matter of just partying it out into two drawings or three drawings.
Okay.
Now, have you made any progress talking with the people in Morning Glories? Are you still under negotiation?
We've provided them with those conditions that we provided to the board. We haven't followed up with them since then. We haven't heard anything from them either. I think we're waiting, hopefully, to get your approval before we finalize our agreement with them.
Our approval will be conditioned upon-
Yeah, understood, yeah.
Catch 22.
I go in there, thanks. But I think once we get, you know, the approval with the conditions, we're in a better position to go back to them and tell them exactly what we need. That, that's the theory behind this particular approach. But I think we've also discussed already that the work that's being done in the easement is already part of our right as a result of our, being granted the easement. It's the, the maintenance that we want to do on-
The ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, on their drainage system, which I can't imagine that they would have a problem with.
Anything else, Laura?
I think that's about it.
reopen issues, right? Are we okay as far as the historical?
It's a big thing.
Yeah, I think we're-
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind putting in a condition, something in the fact that asks for a good faith effort to come back up and find that barn and new home. I mean, if you can do it, you can do it. If you can't, you can't.
Yeah, that's, that's really a Chris question. I know that we had discussions about that earlier on in the process, about him moving that barn over to some property that he owns across the back Drew Place and whatnot. I just don't know, you know, I don't know-
I mean, I'm not suggesting it has to be done. I'm suggesting it's a good faith effort to look at it.
Oh, I think, if you're asking for that, I think Chris has already made that good faith effort. He wants to, he would like to relocate it. I just don't know if he could.
Maybe he can contact the historic commission and see if, you know, they're willing to-
They want.
put out some, some feelers and see if they can find a place for it.
Yeah. You could certainly, I could pass that, a request on to him, see what he can do about that. I think he would thought that he would try to keep it himself, to be honest with you. I thought, you know what I mean? I think he owns some land behind Ford Place or something. That was kind of what he was thinking.
Well, he talked about it, but, yeah.
Yeah. Well, he talked about it with us more than kind of what he talked about here. I think he was really hoping he could do it, so.
Well, if that doesn't work out, maybe, you know, he could talk to the historic people.
Certainly, see, yeah.
So where are we?
Well, we have some, we did the findings of fact the last time, and the changes that you wanted to make were incorporated, and I think everyone's received those. I don't know if anyone had any questions, comments, thoughts.
I'm good.
You voted on this, right?
Yep, you guys voted on those.
When we vote, when we voted, modified, then we voted. Clarifies all the modifications.
Right. And on the conditions.
Let me, let me ask this.
We didn't, yeah, okay.
You, you seen the conditions?
Yes.
The latest ones?
Yes.
January 5th, I think this may be different than what you have.
Karen just gave it to me. She was kind enough.
January 2nd, right?
Let me make a.
January 2nd, right?
But I'd say the 2nd.
Well, it's actually January 5th, so, yeah.
But these are the same as yours, what?
If it says January 5th, it's the same.
Second.
Okay, well then, well, let's figure out where we're going to go.
Let me make an observation. It's 16 minutes till 10 o'clock. And what I'm going to suggest is I'm not going to get them all done between now and 10 o'clock. No matter how diligent we all work, we're not going to get them done. And if the difference is 16 minutes, I can put 16 minutes on another meeting and get, start, go from start to finish on it. So I'm going to suggest is what we do is we, we sit there, pat ourselves on the back to get to where we got here tonight, and then come back up and then go through the next meeting and go through all of the conditions.
I would also sugge, I would also suggest to that, that we incorporate, you know, what was in the letter into the, you know, so that it gets in here the right way.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that would be, that would be, that would be better. If the conditions are read next time, that include the things in Greg's letter and what we discussed tonight. Then that makes a whole lot of sense. Then we're reading the conditions with probably very little adjustments.
Continuity.
All we would be doing at the next meeting is bringing in the erosion plans for you to look at to show that we have explored erosion control during the phasing of the process. So, so our homework isn't necessarily drafting, it's sort of getting some plans in that we bring in next time.
Can we get those in advance of the meeting so we get a chance to look at them?
Of course, no, I meant, yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah, and maybe we could send out the draft decision.
On our homework is to take the phasing schedule, put the phasing schedule in.
Into the, exactly, into the conditions, right. That's how, I, I think that makes sense. As much as I would like to go along, Mr. Taylor's a very fast reader, but I don't think he could get through it in 15 minutes, so.
Well, then we'll give him a homework assignment. Your homework assignment is to practice.
Okay. The other thing we should get into the conditions is the comment about the emergency address, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we actually have something about that in this one, I believe.
So if that's agreeable to you, then that's what I'd like to do.
I, I think it makes sense. Give it a little time.
And again, like if we can get the conditions to the applicants.
The lawyer says it makes sense, I may want to rethink.
Yeah, we always do that.
Yeah.
They want to rethink my position. So when are we up for an action?
Well, we have time on February 12 at, well, one question is how long you want for your public hearing on the zoning articles, which is also February 12. That starts at 8 o'clock and.
That's, what, which one, I wonder what we got that's going in there, 40R?
We got 40R, accessory dwellings, height limit on, on elevations in the floodplain, and possibly situat country club, but that has to be referred by the selectmen, and they're in the process of deciding that, so, and that hasn't been decided yet.
The height's five minutes, 40R is the long one.
What's on the 5th?
Well, on the accessory dwellings.
We're not meeting on the 5th.
Oh, not?
Nope.
Yeah, that's another, have you sent out a 2015 schedule?
Yeah, I sent it out. I can resend it out.
Okay, if you've sent it out, I can look for it.
So we only have one meeting in February?
No, the 12th and the 26th. So, the reason that the zoning hearing is, is good to go for the 12th is there are all these other boards that have to review the town meeting articles, so we can. Um, yeah, we do. We do. And we have 50 Country Way tentatively for 9:30.
So let's put, let's, let's leave it that way, don't put anything in after.
Okay.
I thought we, forgive me, last meeting, I thought we, we did this meeting, but then we thought that we would be penciled in for the, the end of the month meeting? Did I miss that?
The 22nd?
Yeah.
That's the one where we got the.
We could not do that. We, we just couldn't do it because of 40R. Now, if, you know, I wish I knew, you know, I wish I had a crystal ball on 40R, believe me, with everything that's gone into that, but right now, that's, that's taking like an hour and a half.
Yeah, I'm just nervous about getting in, getting onto the meeting when you guys are going over the town meeting warrant articles, that can usually get pretty involved, I would think. I don't know what's on the list this year, but.
Bill, may I make a suggestion? That we start on the 22nd at 7 with this, and then it's done for the public hearing for zoning at 8 o'clock?
Well, we can't do it in a half hour, to be honest with you.
Now, I'm talking about 7 o'clock.
Yeah, we, we have something scheduled.
7:30.
All right. Well, here's another, just a suggestion.
We could, yeah.
Another, a date, a specific, like added date?
Well, before we do that, maybe, since we have not advertised the public hearing on the zoning articles yet, maybe what we could do is.
Make them 9 o'clock?
Move everything, well, I don't know if you really want to do that, maybe we could start that one meeting early at 7.
Which date is that?
That's on February 12. I mean, we'll have to reschedule a couple of things, but.
Could we post that date for the 12th?
We haven't yet. I have someone coming to do the presentation of the housing plan, which is another requirement of 40R. So she was scheduled for 7:30, but I can ask her to come, I'm sure she won't have a problem, coming at 7, then do the public hearing on the zoning articles at 7:30, have